Good evening and welcome. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. During this year's Independence Day celebrations, let us remember and treasure these words. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, will you please present the resolution for consideration?
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of July 2nd, 2024 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 is being presented to council at this time. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
I move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams.
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the April 10th, 2024 work session and April 17th, 2024 work session and regular meeting. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
Move to approve.
A motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Johnson, and Councilman Rector.
Second.
Second, Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one special presentation this evening, which is a proclamation in recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Deputy Manager, please present an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Mark Furlough will approach the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Tonight we have several members of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission and our Suffolk Parks and Trails Alliance with us tonight. I'd ask them to stand to be recognized really quickly. And then we also have several members of our Parks and Recreation staff. I'd also like to ask them to rise to be recognized for Parks and Recreation Month. And I'm not here to announce my retirement, to pursue my career in sign spinning. This year's theme for Parks and Recreation Month is Where You Belong. We'll be taking this sign out to a lot of our events, our parks, our recreation centers and programs, and we'll be taking pictures of people with the sign because everybody belongs at one of Suffolk's parks, recreation centers, or special events this month.
Madam Clerk, will you please present the proclamation?
Whereas parks and recreation programs are integral parts of communities throughout this country, including the City of Suffolk, and whereas parks and recreation departments encourage physical activity by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designated to promote a healthy lifestyle, and whereas parks and recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services and education, after-school programming, and youth sports, which are critical to childhood development, and whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Suffolk recognizes the wellness, economic, and social benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this second day of July in the year of our Lord, 2024.
No, thank you, and we hope everybody comes out to celebrate with us this month. We've got a lot of special events planned, like our Fourth of July Stars and Stites Spectacular, which is this Thursday. Next week, we have our 50-Fest at the brand-new festival park on July 13th, and then July 20th is our Flick and Float at Cypress Park Pool, and the following Saturday, July 27th, we have a movie at the Holland Ball Field, too. We'll be showing the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. So Where You Belong is in one of Suffolk's parks, recreation centers, or trails in the month of July and all year long. So thank you.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. At this time, a motion would be in order. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilman Fawcett.
Move as presented, please.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Bennett. Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any speaker, agenda speakers at this time? In this case, please explain the process.
There are no agenda speakers at this time, Mayor Dooman.
Would you please present the consent agenda items for consideration?
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program for the bridge replacement on Nansman Parkway over Beaman's Mill Pond. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia 911 Services Board Public Safety Answering Point Grant Program for the Suffolk Police Department. Item number nine, in ordinance to amend Article 22, solar revenue share for solar energy projects of the code of the City of Suffolk. Item number 10, a resolution of the City Council approving the City of Suffolk's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Kroger and its related corporate entities, and directing the city attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement. And item number 11, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a communications facility license agreement with Cox Business.
Mr. Deputy Manager, would you please provide an overview of the items?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, starting at item number seven, this is an ordinance to accept and appropriate $2,884,081 in additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program for the bridge replacement on Nansman Parkway over Beaman's Mill Pond. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the fiscal year 2425 capital programs fund budget by $2,884,081. Item number eight, the city has received $4,000 in funding from the Virginia 911 Services Board Fiscal Year 25 Public Safety Answering Point Grant Program in support of the Suffolk Police Department 911 Public Safety Communication Education and Training for Emergency Communication Operators in the Emergency Communications Center. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund by $4,000 and does not require a local match. Item number nine, an ordinance with proposed amendments that align with the revenue share language allowed by the Commonwealth of Virginia, authorizing the City of Suffolk to collect revenue via revenue share with solar energy facilities that produce less than five megawatts. City Council has previously adopted language allowing for share, revenue share for solar energy facilities that produce greater than five megawatts. Item number 10, is a resolution to combat the financial impacts of opioid abuse, the city has adopted the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding. This action is related to the settlement agreement pending with Kroger, which will provide funds to the City of Suffolk. Approval of this resolution, which is part of a multi-state opioid settlement, will allow funds to flow to the City of Suffolk to educate the public on the dangers of drug abuse and to mitigate the harmful effects of opioid abuse. And number, item number 11, is an ordinance which authorizes the city manager to execute a communications facility license agreement with Cox Business. The Virginia Department of Transportation is in the process of upgrading the fiber communication network that allows the city to stream various traffic cameras to their traffic monitoring system. VDOT is funding a dedicated Cox Business fiber connection that will be installed in the City Hall telecommunications room. The agreement allows Cox Business to install the communications equipment in City Hall and authorizes access to their equipment when necessary for maintenance and troubleshooting.
If there are any items that members of city council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriated at this time. If not, then a motion would be appropriated at this time to adopt the entire agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to accept as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have several public hearings this evening. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship, small, under 6,000 square feet, in main sanctuary use on property located at 540 East Constance Road. Zoning map 35D, parcel KK A, asterisk 1, suite B, account number 053491400. This is CUP 2024-5. Mr. Deputy Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Kevin Wine will provide the project overview.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, as stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship, small, meaning that the sanctuary is under 6,000 square feet, in total area at 540 East Constance Road, excuse me, suite B. The property, as stated, is further identified as tax map 35D, parcel KK A, star 1. The property is zoned B2 general commercial, and its presence along East Constance Road places it within the city's special corridor overlay district as well. The property consists of a little less than an acre, 0.86 acres in size, and there is a three-suite commercial building measuring just shy of 7,500 square feet on the site. Presently, Suite A is utilized as a home healthcare office, and Suite C is occupied by Domino's Pizza. So this is a request, as stated, for a small place of worship. The property received a conditional use permit for a church in 2005. This conditional use permit expired in 2014 as the church vacated the premises and the two-year period lapsed. Currently, Hope City Church, which is the applicant for this proposal, has 20 members. It's a pretty small church, and they plan to provide seating for 124 people in the sanctuary. I'll show you that on the next slide, what that conceptual layout looks like. Worship services will take place on Sundays from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with musical rehearsals taking place on Tuesdays at 7:00 p.m. Based on the seats provided in the sanctuary, the use will require 31 parking spaces. The site does have 36 spaces shared amongst the Domino's and a small office use on the site. They have presented the city with a cooperative parking agreement with the property owner, and the uses, particularly the peak use of the church would be on Sundays. At that point, the small office use is not operating, so that frees up four spaces, giving them the 31 that they would need to serve those 124 seats. Here you have that proposed suite layout. As I noted, this was prepared by a registered architect, and you can see the sanctuary is proposed to hold no more than 124 occupants. However, it is important to note that final occupancy will be determined by the building official and fire marshal upon approval of a required change of use permit. This is a requirement for all change of uses when you're going from one building use category to another. However, we do detail this as a condition, condition number three in staff's report. Here is a picture of the existing vacant sanctuary, particularly the stage. Within staff's report, you will note that there is a photo depicting the sanctuary with seats, which will assist in visualizing what the space would look like should this intended use be approved. This is the site layout depicting the parking spaces. You can see there are 36 spaces located on the site, striped spaces, and considering that one of the users would not be operating on the weekends, that gives them the needed spaces during their peak time to leverage the 31 spaces they need for the proposed 124-seat sanctuary. Staff has evaluated the applicant's proposal in accordance with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan as well as the applicable provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance. Given its placement along an arterial roadway consisting primarily of commercial uses, the use is not anticipated to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. As such, staff is recommending approval of this application with the seven conditions noted in our staff report. Further, the Planning Commission at their meeting on May 23rd are forwarding this request to you all with their recommendation of approval by a vote of six to zero. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will be happy to address any concerns at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Justin Goodman, and I am the senior pastor of Hope City Church. It's been a process getting to this moment, but I'm so grateful that I can stand before you guys. It's been a privilege working with the Planning Department, Mr. Kevin and Shannon Wolf, and we finally got here. And I just want to say I love the City of Suffolk. I was born and raised here. I'm a resident here. I was educated in the City of Suffolk public school system. I attended Booker T. Washington, John F. Kennedy Middle School, and I graduated from Lakeland High School. I moved away for a short period of time to attend Bible college in Miami, Florida. Interesting place to go to Bible college, but I attended there for a short period of time. I graduated, but I love Suffolk so much. As soon as I graduated, I came right back, and I've been a full-time business owner here ever since. And it's no secret that Suffolk is growing drastically, and with much growth, there's much challenge. And I believe that Hope City Church, we can be, or we can contribute to some of the challenges that our city face in the times to come. We've participated in the Great Suffolk Cleanup. We've been involved in the community. We've done food distribution. And last year, we were privileged to give away a $1,500 scholarship with my nonprofit to a high school senior that had a parent that was incarcerated, and we blessed her with a $1,500 scholarship. And my nonprofit, we minister to the incarcerated community, and one of the things we would love to do at our location is do a criminal expungement clinic throughout the years. But yeah, I love this city. I hope that you guys vote in favor of us coming to this location, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Not hearing any. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no other speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Bennett?
I move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett. Councilman Williams?
I second it, Mayor.
Got a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I do have one question. Mr. Wine, could you come forward and just answer a quick question for me? Number one, I want to thank Pastor Goodman for this initiative, his enthusiasm, and his willing to give back to the community, and to come back to the community. We're glad you're here. It is a little toasty in Florida right now, but anyhow. Mr. Wine, if you can, I'm very familiar with this property. In the past, the church was also utilizing this property, and there were two issues that came to bear. One was parking, and one was sewage. Both of these issues been addressed, or you confident that we will not have a problem as we did before?
The second part of that question, yes. We are confident based on the information submitted by this applicant. Further, prior to them getting a certificate of occupancy to operate, occupancy will be established by our department, then the building official, in collaboration with the fire marshal, as well as that CO would not be issued until the Department of Health has reviewed the septic tank capacity on the property to ensure that the occupant load aligns with what capacity is available. So those will certainly be addressed prior to the church being able to legally occupy the suite.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor for approval. It was made by Councilman Bennett and seconded by Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion? If none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our next public hearing? The next public hearing is an ordinance to amend Chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article 4, zoning, Section 31-411, use patterns, subsection E, cluster pattern, subscription 10, design standards of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA 2024-2. Mr. Deputy Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Wine will provide an overview of the proposed ordinance modifications.
Thank you again, Mr. Deputy Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This is an ordinance text amendment in which we took a review of our design standards for our cluster subdivisions that really had not been updated since the creation of the Unified Development Ordinance, going back to 1999. But just a little refresher as it relates to cluster, and I know we've talked about cluster subdivisions before, but we are authorized through state code to, one, we're required to have a cluster design pattern to allow for it because we are a high-growth locality per the Code of Virginia. Second, the same authorizing legislation allows governing bodies to establish design standards for cluster subdivisions at its discretion to include any provisions it determines to be appropriate to ensure quality development. And that's what these are. These are design standards that do not exist for conventional subdivisions. They kind of go above and beyond, but they've not been reviewed for a while, and I'm going to go over, hopefully, pretty quickly, what we're eliminating and why, and/or what we're modifying and why. So we allow for cluster subdivisions in Article 4. It's one of the use patterns. It's the most often leveraged use pattern that we have in the city for subdivisions beyond the conventional patterns that we see. They allow for an alternative lot size, alternative setbacks, frontage requirements, and previous cover. Basically, all of the dimensional standards that we have established in our Unified Development Ordinance for zoning districts, there's some leniency there with cluster subdivisions with the trade-off that we're conserving usually environmentally sensitive areas with the goal of preserving open space in perpetuity. So we've noted, we've talked about this in the past, too, but there are a lot of benefits to clustering. One, you have this property that's held in perpetuity as open space. The city receives an easement over that property to ensure that it is held in open space in perpetuity. The smaller lot sizes in general result in less infrastructure maintenance costs for both the city and the taxpayers alike. That does not result in any increase in density in any way. You're looking at one property that's being developed. The density over that entire property will remain the same. The lots would just be smaller. It allows flexibility, particularly when there are some environmental features present, and those noted minimum design standards, those are, relates to community design, open space, recreation design, and architectural features for residential structures that are to be developed within these cluster subdivisions. In total, the UDO establishes 33 separate design standards for cluster subdivisions, and that's what we revisited through discussion with the Committee on Ordinances and the Planning Commission leading up to this ordinance text amendment. So in total, as we reviewed these 33 design standards, staff has identified seven that would be appropriate for removal. I'll go over why, but either they were redundant, or we've seen some industry improvements over the last 25 years, particularly as it relates to building materials. On top of those seven that we've identified for removal, we have identified five that would be appropriate for modification. Once again, this is going back to improvements with building quality. So the first one, being corner lots should have side-entry garages. We have noticed that this is not practical all the time. Sometimes you will have a corner lot that fronts on your interior local streets. The other side where the garage would be required in the driveway would come off a much more trafficked street, and that's just not practical, and that's not what we intended to accomplish. It's something that builders are utilizing anyway typically. However, did not believe that we needed to regulate that due to creating a need potentially for variance from the BZA. 50% of the homes being one-story unless the development qualifies as an exempt retirement community, particularly with some changes over the last couple decades, aging populations, market trends, there's a pretty strong demand for one-stories or master-down units. We've noticed that. So we do not see the need to keep that provision. Two-story homes having a minimum square footage associated with them, and one-story homes also having one 1,500 square feet or 1,600 square feet. While those are somewhat low square footage requirements, we do believe that just limits development potential for more affordable units, which conflicts with the city's goals as it relates to affordable housing, among other things. Trash containers and recycling bins should be completely screened from view of the streets. We looked at this one, and it's not something that's really been a regulatory issue for the city. I say that because there are some practical issues associated with fully screening from the streets, but it also tends to be regulated really effectively at the HOA level. So that's something that we felt could be handled that way, as it's not something that we've observed as an issue. Moving along for some of the provisions that we are aiming to eliminate here, fencing both on the lot and perimeter of the development, shall we, designed in Article 6 of this ordinance? Well, it's regulated by Article 6. We feel it's redundant to have it in that section, in this section as well, so we feel the need to remove that. Chimneys being constructed of brick or stone. Most new homes are not being constructed with wood burning fireplaces, unless there's no... with wood burning fireplaces, unless there's no associated chimney, so this has not been an issue for us, really going back to trends in the building community. And then, allowing materials to be regulated through deed restrictions, that is, there's no need for us to codify that in an ordinance, that is being done anyway. So, the five that we are proposing for modification, the first one is being, we're going to combine, but this relates to landings being visible from the street right of way, consisting of 24 square feet in total area, this has been effective, it leads to quite an attractive elevation, but we thought that could be combined with a separate provision that also speaks to having porches or stoops covered by a roof, so we've combined those two, no changes except for there'll be one design standard now, for the sake of simplicity. No less than eight percent of the total area of any side or rear facade facing a public street shall consist of windows or doors. Right now, that is for all side or rear facades, we are modifying this to talk to the more prominent ones that will be visible from a public street, the ones that we really care about visibly, so we have refined that to apply to areas visible from public view. The last two here, probably the most significant change is this one here, as it relates to exterior materials and finishes. Currently, no less than 50% of all the buildings that make up a cluster subdivision should consist of brick, stone, wood, clapboard, cedar shake, hardbo- hardboard, fiber cement, or similar material. This has resulted in most of our cluster subdivisions utilizing fiber, cement, or hardy plank throughout the entire community, it's led to some quite attractive communities. However, there's been a lot of advancements as it relates to vinyl siding, the vinyl siding of 25 years ago is not the vinyl siding that we have today, we did a lot of research on this at the Committee on Ordinances level, ordered a lot of samples, and ultimately landed on premium-grade vinyl, being a pretty compatible material to hardy plank. As such, we've modified this section to allow for premium-grade vinyl, identifying it by its thickness, that thickness leads to durability, and it does a pretty decent job, it's pretty difficult to tell whether it's vinyl or hardy plank when it's a premium-grade vinyl like that, when you're a little distance away, particularly going, walking through the street, so we've updated that to allow for premium-grade vinyl. Lastly, as it relates to skirting on foundations, there have been some additional innovations, particularly as it relates to parage and stucco coatings, that could be utilized on foundations, this would be permitted along with the brick, stone, or stone-faced block that we currently permit. So, those are the changes, I know that's a lot of information, this has been discussed at length with our Committee on Ordinances and our Planning Commission, the Planning Commission at their meeting in May considered this item, and they are recommending it to you today for your approval. That concludes my presentation on this item, I'll be happy to stand by and answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration, what's your pleasure? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Rector?
I'll second that motion, but Kevin, if you don't mind, can you come up to the podium for a quick question? I just want to be clear on your statement about no increase in density, that's taking the land area as a whole, not compressing it and taking out environmentally sensitive areas, so the density is computed on the whole, not on the compressed area, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval, a motion made by Councilman Fawcett, seconded by Councilman Rector, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to ordinances, our first ordinance is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk, to change the zoning from CP, Commerce Park, O-I, Office Institutional, and RU, Residential Urban Zoning District Conditional, to RC, Residential Compact Zoning District Conditional, for property located in zoning map 34, parcel 3C, asterisk 5, asterisk 6, account number 252853000, this is RZN 2023-5, conditional, and this item was continued from City Council's April 17, 2024 meeting. Mr. Deputy Manager, please present an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wine will provide a staff overview on the ordinance.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Deputy Manager. As the mayor stated, this is an item that was continued from your April 17 meeting, as such, I'm going to try to be brief in my presentation and just highlight what has changed since then, but as a quick reminder, this is a proposed rezoning request for property located on Pitch Kettle Road at the bypass of Route 58. The request would take three separate zoning districts that exist on the one parcel, RU Conditional for a portion of it, CP and O-N-I, and rezone that to RRC, Residential Compact Conditional Zoning District. So, there's a little bit of history to this, I outlined that at your April meeting, but you've noted that a portion of it is zoned RU Conditional today, that was rezoned as part of a rezoning request in 2007, where CP, a portion of CP on the property went to RU and O-N-I, and they retained a portion of CP as well, that's our Commerce Park. This would, this paved the way for development of up to 179 age-restricted townhome units with 20,000 square feet of commercial space, the 179 townhome units would result in a density of five units per acre. In this case, the applicant is proposing rezoning the entire site, consisting of 63 acres, from the existing CP, O-N-I, and RU Conditional designations to that residential compact designation I discussed earlier. The applicant envisions, in this case, constructing 335 townhome units. The construction of 335 townhome units on the site at 63 acres, 58 acres are developable, would result in a density of 5.7 units per acre, and that represents a modest increase over what is approved for a portion of the property currently. Here you have the layout, that was in staff's packet as well, you can see how the developer envisions developing the property, this is somewhat consistent with the previous development proposal, obviously, and expansion, this is not proffered, however, but it is presented for conceptual purposes. So, there are 10 proffers that the applicant has provided in support of their application, a cash contribution to advanced capacity at the elementary school and high school levels, to the, in the amount of $5.85 million. This includes an additional $1.05 million above what is necessary to adequately advance capacity at the elementary school level, for the proposed Elephant's Fork Elementary replacement contained within the capital improvement project. They are proffering to construct no more than 335 townhome units, these would be at a minimum square footage of 1,700 square feet, or higher of residential space, there are exterior elevations and design requirements established, the exterior elevation proffered is a part of the ordinance and within staff's report. $100,000 in a cash contribution towards the city's Route 58 Pitch Kettle Road interchange project that is contained within the capital improvements plan, amenities of which include a clubhouse and pool, enhanced community entrance features, and at your last meeting there was project phasing presented for your consideration, however, there's a modification to that over what was previously considered, and I'll outline that currently, outline that now. So, as it relates to the phasing, and what's presented for your consideration this evening that is different than your previous consideration in April, is a phasing schedule that aligns with what you see on the screen here, but essentially, over a five-year period, that is what would be full build-out, that would start in year 2027, in which they would be permitted to receive up to 48 certificates of occupancy from the city during that calendar year. In 2028, that would remain at four COs monthly, allowing, I'm sorry, that would increase to six, allowing them 72 units in 2028, and 72 additional units in 2029, you can see on the table here, how that goes accumulatively on an annual basis. In the calendar year 2030, that would increase to seven units over the course of the year, resulting in 84 units total, meaning that they would eventually get to full build-out sometime in 2031. This, it's important to note, would not include potential model units that they would construct, they would be a total part of the development, they would not be able to exceed the 335 units, but they would be able to get COs for up to seven units that would not be occupied immediately, but would serve as models for the community. So that is how the phasing schedule has been modified, basically, they decrease the amount of COs that can be issued on a monthly basis, really annually, in those first few years, to control the amount of units that come online at any given time. Here's that elevation exhibit provided and proffered by the applicant, they're proffering substantial conformance to this. So, as a reminder, the Planning Commission at their meeting in March considered this item, and they're forwarding it to you all with their recommendation of denial by a vote of two to six. City Council, as we've talked about at your April 17 meeting, considered this application, and action was deferred for 60 days, and this is where we are tonight. Staff has evaluated this application against the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance, and we are recommending its approval to you all this evening. That concludes my presentation on this item, this is an ordinance, as the public hearing was closed at your April meeting, as such, there's no public hearing this evening, so I will stand by for any questions you may have as it relates to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration, question, comments, or a motion, Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular ordinance, where we're at and how we got here from April 17, was a much discussion about Elephant's Fork's school capacity, and at the time, we tabled this with the request back to the developer to come up with a scale that would virtually, as you've seen on the screen, come back and bring a certain number of buildings over a period from 27 to 31. So, with that, it gives us a little bit of time to, hopefully, we know that we got to work on Elephant's Fork, there's no question about it, and it's probably going to come up, I would think, rather sooner than later, but the point is, is the developer has done what we asked him to do, to bring this back in the 60-day time period. So, with that, I'm at the point where, if you requested him to do something, and he's met the demand, it looks about as close as you can get, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of this ordinance request.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to have a little discussion first, though, the Elephant's Fork Elementary School replacement is not scheduled to be complete until 3034. Anyway, you look at these numbers, I mean, we're going, our school's going to be overloaded by 2031, I'm having a hard time being responsible with this, if we're going to allow development when we don't have the school capacity for it, and we don't have it on the CIP, I thought the discussion was it would be on the CIP that we would at least have those schools in focus. I have a little bit of a problem, I also have a little bit of a problem with $100,000 for road construction, I use Pitch Kettle Road every day, 313 units, I have not been in favor of this from day one, and I don't think I can put it in favor of it tonight, but that's a lot of traffic. Rob, Mr. Lewis, can I ask you one question, please? I don't want to put you on the spot, but just tell me briefly what the plan is on Pitch Kettle, as far as handling all of this traffic, not only this subdivision, but the others that have not even been developed yet, are we going to put a stoplight, what's the solution?
No, sir, so at this point, we have expanded a study that we're doing right now on the bypass, where we're looking at the Wright 460 interchange and the Wright 10 interchange to now include Wilroy and Pitch Kettle Road, at this point, we have a vision that most likely that interchange will get modified to what's called a bowtie, so it's not traffic signals, traffic signals would actually MP traffic rather than enhance it, and part of this funding here is to help us do that study, to help get through all the regulatory process, so that we can then start seeking the funding for construction. I believe there may be already one other development in the area that's had to contribute to this fund previously, and there's already some money in the books for that, but, I mean, ideally, with a traffic generator like this, is not a better place to put it than do a, buy a high-capacity, high-speed arterial highway.
I guess my concern, though, is that it is a, definitely a safety situation right now on that entrance from 58 getting onto Pitch Kettle, I mean, I use it in-
I'm not really seeing it, sir, it may be, but I, without searching the police accident data, I travel several days a week, also going and coming from work, and I've not seen a real safety issue there, but again, it would take a study to really verify that one way.
What it's going to be, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's, that's all I've got to say, thank you.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that this ordinance does, and this development does, is that it settles this property, for lack of a better phrase, with the three different zonings that are on this particular parcel, a lot of the byright uses that the CP and the O-N-I allow, I think what could potentially bring things into that corridor that are very much incompatible with the residential development that exists between the bypass and, basically, Constance Road. I do have to agree a little bit with Robert Lewis, I travel that road probably two or three times a day. The traffic on Pitch Kettle Road is not a problem, I've been there at 4:30 in the afternoon and counted three or four cars on the road, that's not a huge amount of traffic. And I think, you know, one of the things that, and I've said this before, that I really like about a conditional rezoning is that it does allow you, and it does allow the city, and it does allow the neighboring residences to work with the developer to, for lack of a better phrase, extract certain conditions that make the proposed development much more palatable, not only to the surrounding community, but also to the city as a whole, and I think this, stretching out the issuance of certificates of occupancy permits over a seven-year period is a- a seven-year period is a classic example of what can be accomplished when you work with the developer to try to bring the best project to the city that is possible. So having said that, I'll second Councilman Fossett's motion to approve this ordinance.
Okay, we get a second from Councilman Rector for approval? Do we have any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I've got a couple of comments before we vote. When I was initially approached with this project, my concern was absolutely the schools and where we are as far as Elephant's Fork is concerned. And I spoke to the developer also about coming up with an option that would limit the number of COs that would be issued during the construction process, so it would align more with the building of Elephant's Fork. Now, there's no guarantee that the school board will keep Elephant's Fork in the place that it is, but I honestly believe that under the circumstances, they absolutely will. And with that being said, you know, then it's incumbent upon us to at least keep it within the CIP's schedule. To Councilman Johnson's point, not that I'm, the, Elephant's Fork is scheduled to start in '28 with 9.5 million, 26.2 million, and '29, and actually completed in fiscal year '30. The '30-'34 is a category, so it's not, it won't go out to '34. It will be completed, according to the CIP, in 2030. The development will not be built out to 2031. Another consideration is that, I think what we found is that the numbers in the UDO and the projected students don't normally align with the actual number of students that end up in school. And the typical reality of it is, is there's about the same number of students in public schools today than there was 10 years ago, even though we've had all this additional development. So the schools are a concern to me. As far as the location is concerned, I think the staff report probably sums it up the best. We talk about the traffic studies. I haven't looked at all the traffic studies, but I assume that our people have. And the staff report states that the current zoning going to RC, the residential compact zoning district conditional, is consistent with the policies of the 2035 comprehensive plan. The proposed density of roughly 5.7 units per acre would be more compatible with the established residential development patterns than commercial or office uses permitted by the existing, existing O1 and CP zoning districts. Therefore, the staff recommends approval. Some of the things that bother me somewhat as far as the, the OI designation, the CI, the OI and the CP, it allows for a few things like flex space, office park, transitional shelters, research and development, which is not too bad. But I'm mainly looking at the flex space aspect of it, which the flex space, flex space is not a warehouse, it's a small warehouse. It's limited in height, it's limited as to how many doors there are. I think that it's, that it's incumbent upon us to do whatever we can to keep truck traffic off of Pitch Kettle Road. I mean, we've got one large project, rather large project on 460. We've got to ensure that we keep the truck traffic off of that. But with the number of jobs that are supposed to be created with the Port 460 project, and there was some huge numbers out there, I think realistically, it's 2,000 to 3,000 jobs will be created at that location. And we need to keep in mind that that may not be all warehouses either. I mean, it was zoned and tended for warehouses, but I know there's been talk of also manufacturing interest and possibly some data center interest. Well, these people are going to need someplace to live, and this housing is not extraordinarily high. I think it qualifies as moderate to workforce-type housing. Another plus, I think we should take into consideration, commercial versus residential in this particular area, is number one, the traffic, for the most part, is going to go out and take a right and get on 58 regardless. But by being residential, we are making huge investments downtown to revitalize downtown, huge investments. We've got a 25, 6, 7 million dollar library that's done, we've got a festival center that is nearing completion. We've purchased two strategic buildings on Main Street that we can control. We've created more parking, and there'll be more incentives, hopefully, for private investment downtown for some more shops, unique shops, for some more eateries, some unique eateries. And they're going to need individuals, they're going to need rooftops to patronize them. I think this development may be perfect for that. You want to go out and go out to eat, you go out to take a left, you go downtown, you get something to eat, and you come back on Pitch Kettle Road. But that's just my thought process. And once again, it's what we'll get with, what we have, what we could get versus what this will create. So with the, with the staging of the build out, limited by the number of occupancy permits, they will, all things being equal, align with the building of Elephant's Fork Elementary because it is supposed to be completed in 2030. So with that being said, I would support the motion. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question after you started your comments, but Kevin, could you come back up for just a second? And I'm going to ask you to conjecture, and I know that's not fair, but, so Planning Commission sent this to us with a two to six vote to deny. Do you think that the changes that have been made and presented to us tonight would address some of the concerns that the Planning Commission had?
No, we're going back to March at this point. I can't definitively answer that either way. It probably would have made for more interesting conversation for certain.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any other questions and comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Councilmembers, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Bennett, please. The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay, our next ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the paperwork necessary to effectuate the certification of the city of Suffolk in order to receive proceeds from the aqueous film-forming foam products liability litigation class action settlements, and I am not going to say that one again. Mr. Deputy Manager, please present it over here.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, to provide you with more information on this ordinance, Mr. Paul Retell, your Director of Public Utilities, is here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Give a little background on this, that was, that is a mouthful, so I'm going to hit some of this to give you a little bit of context. The litigation that we're asking the city manager to certify that we're able to submit on, it's due to aqueous film-forming foams, AFF, have been the firefighting service. People know what AFF is. It's used to put out aircraft fires. And it also, a class of chemicals called perfluoral alkyl substances, or PFOS is the acronym. And what has occurred is across the country is these compounds have entered into the drinking water system through the raw water sources. PFOS is found in a variety of commercial and consumer products, which we'll talk about on the next slide. PFOS is also a broad umbrella of thousands of synthetic product substances. Sometimes in the news, you may have heard as PFOS over the last few years is referred to as the forever chemicals. And the reason for that is, is in many cases, chemicals will break down in the environment. Different organic substances that consist of carbon will break down in the environment. These synthetic chemicals do not. Takes a very, very long time to break down, in some cases, hundreds or thousands of years to break down. But they have found their way into our drinking water system. So if you take a look at a slide of where PFOS is found, you're really talking about some of the consumer products, commercial products. So for example, clothing and textiles, think of Gore-Tex, PFOS is in Gore-Tex. Carpeting and flooring fibers, non-stick cookware, the coating that's on there, the Teflon coating. Food packaging, the carryout trays that you have contain PFOS. And of course, we've talked about the firefighting foam. So it's used in a wide variety of substances. So you look at the PFOS regulatory limits in drinking water, the, in the regulatory, in the regulatory realm for drinking water, we're, we talk about a maximum contaminant level or an MCL. So EPA recently came out and listed PFOS and PFOA. PFOA is another component. I won't go ahead and say, pronounce what that is, but it's limited to four parts per trillion. Now, I want to give you a little bit of context what a part per trillion is. A part per trillion would be if you went and you're traveling up 664 and you look at our North Suffolk tank, that would be, if I took a, one part would be if I took a drop of red food coloring and dropped it into the volume of 12 of those tanks. That's one part per trillion. Or perhaps, if you looked, if you're more familiar with the tanks that are off Holland Road, the standpipe, that would be nine of those standpipes off of Holland Road. So it's very, very small amounts. We've gotten ahead of this, where we've done some laboratory testing for city water sources and as well as the finished water, finished water being the term of the water that you would actually drink. PFOS was detected below the regulatory limits in the raw surface water that we take in at our treatment plant, so we're below those limits. And then when it comes through our process, primarily because of the dilution, there is no detection in Suffolk finished water. However, even though we do not have that in our finished water because it's been detected through two rounds of laboratory sampling in 2022 and 2023, we are still able to participate in these class action lawsuits. So a little bit of background on that, on the submission, there are currently four settling defendants. These are the companies, the 3M Company, DuPont, Tyco, and BASF. And again, the settlements are designed to resolve drinking water system claims. The plan for us moving forward would be that the city of Suffolk, as part of the Western Tidewater Water Authority, would file the claim. Western Tidewater Water Authority has two members jurisdictions. That's us, the city of Suffolk, and Isle of Wight. So then, if we recouped any proceeds from the settlement, what we would do is we would handle those, those proceeds, those funds, and we would split them between the city of Suffolk and Iowa County under the terms of the 2009 Western Tidewater Water Authority Regional Water Agreement. So tonight, the ordinance before you for consideration is to give the authority to the city manager to execute those claim forms so that we can submit them for the class action lawsuits. With that, I'll stand by with any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel? Councilman Fossett?
Hey, Paul, I just wanted to make a comment. I'm very familiar with this AFF, very familiar. Of course, predominantly, AFF has been used in firefighting for a number of years, particularly in crash-type situations, hangars that store aircraft. I have swam in this stuff, believe me, over my career. So I'm very familiar with this, and throughout the country, the lawsuits on this product is astronomical for a lot of firefighters around the country that have been exposed to this for various cancer-related issues. So this, this AFF is, was never explained to us what could happen from the exposure of it, even though you might wear a limited protection type PPE. So it's, it's, what's going on here is not just you, but it's around the country. And you identified DuPont, 3M, and all those. They were the big three that were involved in this. They never shared where, what it could do to you in the long term. They never shared with that, and it never came out on MSDS that I was, that I was aware of, and you know what they are. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and ask for approval of the ordinance, but I just wanted to mention that to you since I've been involved with that-
Sure.
-AFF for quite a long time. Probably over 34 years of it, to be honest with you. So I appreciate the presentation on it.
We got a motion for approval from Councilman Fossett, Councilman Johnson?
And Paul, I just want to simplify. What you're asking us to do is to allow the city to recoup the funding for the people of this city so that it can be put back to their resources.
To submit the paperwork, allow the city manager to certify that paperwork and submit that to participate in the class action.
And it could be a great deal of money, so it's silly for us not to approve this. So with that, I'll second it. Thank you for bringing it to us.
And we got a second from Councilman Johnson, Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, as a fellow member of the Western Tidewater Water Authority aboard along with Councilman Johnson and of course, city manager Al Moore, who is not with us this evening. First off, I just want to reiterate what I have said from this dais before, just how amazed I am at the technology that is involved in not only getting the water to our kitchen sink, but also taking it away. The facilities that the city has that govern those two processes, I've toured them, I believe they're probably second to none just about anywhere in the country. You and the entire utilities department, you know, I have nothing but respect for the work that you guys do because I cut off my bathroom sink every morning to brush my teeth, and I do it with full confidence that I'm getting good, clean, pure water to do it with. The other good news is that I think it bears repeating, is that the city of Suffolk, our water is nowhere near any of the thresholds that would cause anybody any concern. So even though we're participating in these settlement suits, it is just purely for the benefit of our water authorities. It is not, none of the money, I don't believe, is going to have to go towards any remediation efforts, and is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So with that, I'll endorse the ordinance and look forward to the vote.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor for approval from Councilman Fossett, seconded by Councilman Johnson. In hearing no further discussion, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no resolutions this evening, nor staff reports. We do have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, July 17, 2024, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and the city manager, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Council Williams, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
Yes, Mayor Doeman, we do have non-agenda speakers this evening. The non-agenda speakers portion is, here are the guidelines as outlined in the city code. Each person entitled, participating under the item of business, entitled non-agenda speakers, shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matters. Speakers participating, excuse me, appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Judy Lawrence Lamb, 4818, Sander Time Drive, Wexum, North Carolina, representing self regarding the legacy of James Wesley Lawrence.
Due to the emotional state I remain in after 38 years, I choose to write the words from my heart. A memory came back to me. I came to Daddy's office located in Cypress Manor. While in his office, he and his secretary were lightheartedly joking. When he spotted me standing- me standing at the counter, he referred to me as his protector. It was a joke at the time, but here, decades later, I have become just that. Not for him physically, but I must protect his legacy. My father instilled me the obligation to boldly take a stand for what I believed in and against the things that I didn't. James Wesley Lawrence was the wind beneath many wings. His humility and true humanitarianism may have prevented the appreciation and the celebration and recognition that he earned and deserved. James Wesley Lawrence was an unsung hero. Had there not been for voices left behind, technically, he never existed. My father's lawyer, Robert E. Gillette, advised me to have my mother transfer her rights as administrator of my father's estate to me, after which he became inaccessible. I trusted him because my father did. As a result of my trauma and lack of experience in such matters, it brought, it was brought to my attention that I was spending from a railroad retirement account that was supposed to end at the point of my father's death. I reached out to Mr. Gillette with no response. My father entrusted Mr. Gillette to handle his business affairs, so I had no apprehension about turning to him for counsel. His negligence to respond is questionable because as his lawyer, he had full knowledge of my father's insurance policies, investments, and real estate. I repeat, we only received four burial plots and a casket. In regards to using the refinement, retirement fund, I was assigned a public defender and advised to plead guilty to avoiding having to leave my four children. I was found guilty of knowingly and willingly embezzling, even though it was neither knowingly or willful act. I served a brief sentence and was labeled a felon. Later, I was blessed to have someone assist me in helping me to make full restitution. My dad was on the clock when he was killed on Portsmouth Boulevard. When I was a form of the inheritance that would doom me, it was past the statute of limitations. Finances were not on my mind as I had just lost the most valuable and precious thing in my life, my dad. As an overwhelmed mother of four children who had been financially weakened, I thought that we were being blessed because I was given four cemetery plots. Perhaps it was a deterrent to prevent me from looking further into his insurance policies. My focus providing him, my focus at that time was providing him a proper homegoing. James Wesley Lawrence was vigilant in seeking solutions. Article after article in the Suffolk News Herald outlined specific plans addressing vacant buildings for the homeless, advocating for the city that is vulnerable to the exploitation of other municipalities in regards to water supply, establishments for the purpose of giving our youth positive direction, and many other visions. Cameras, no. He never sought to be seen. With exceptional intelligence and articulations, however, he commanded to be heard. The City of Suffolk has named streets and establishments in honor of certain citizens' contributions. However, James Wesley Lawrence, first housing manager for the city, first rehabilitation inspector for the city, president of his neighborhood civic league, candidate of, for the city council, president of Save Our Underground Resources, civil rights leader, one who endured threats from the Ku Klux Klan in response to his taking a stand against racism, a humanitarian promoter and advocate for the well-being of the youth as well as the homeless, a visionary and an overall leader of the community, was somehow overlooked or more accurately erased. No cameras captured him grocery shopping for hungry families, buying building supplies and hiring workers to repair the roof of senior citizens, buying school books and supplies, helping the children in Cypress Manor to pick up litter on Davis Boulevard, motivating tenants who live in impoverished communities to plant flowers in front of their dwellings, being instrumental in bringing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to Peanut Park, selling a part of his land for $300 to a father moving to Suffolk with seven children, providing employment, getting citizens to get out and vote while orchestrating transportation for them to do so. His single fatherhood, which was a direct consequence of him losing the partnership of a New York wife who struggled with her husband's dedication to making the difference among racism and token people of color. It disturbs me that I have my grandchildren and great-grandchildren attending the schools in the City of Suffolk, oblivious to the contributions made by their great-grandfather and great-great-grandfather in the city in which they live, especially considering the generations of Riddick's, Bird songs, and various other public figures who worked alongside my father. These children are privileged to take pride in their family's history. Do the generations of James Wesley Lawrence deserve any less? Absolutely not.
Our next speaker is Darrell Clemmons, 230 Highland Avenue, representing self regarding school principal and youth activities. Darrell Clemmons. Our next speaker is Gloria Spencer, 100 Cloverleaf Drive, representing self regarding agenda item number 14, RZ 2023 005. Ms. Spencer. Our final speaker this evening is Selena Thornton Manuel, 1921 Piedmont Road, representing Parkside at Bennett's Creek Homeowners Association regarding Creekside Elementary School landscaping.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I come before you to speak on behalf of the landscaping at Creekside Elementary. We've noticed the condition of the landscaping at Creekside Elementary over the past year. The weeds have grown up over the baseball field benches. The BMP, luckily, it was cut down two weeks ago, so I appreciate that. But it still needs to be edged and trimmed and weed eat. Also, the sidewalks needs to be trimmed and also cut for the weeds that's growing on the sidewalk and in the street. So I come before you to see if we can get some attention on Creekside Elementary. It seems that the library, North Suffolk Library, is taken care of. Bennett's Creek Rec Center is taken care of. But when you get to the elementary school, it looks pretty bad. So Councilman, I hope you can help us out with that.
Ma'am, just to give you a little bit of information, the library and the rec center are maintained by the city. The school is maintained by the school system. So, I mean, I'm sure we could make a phone call for you, but in the future, if you contact the school system, talk to superintendent or your school board rep. But feel free to bring it to us if you need to.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. I know. I just want to get the support of my, of my mayor, my vice mayor, my city councilman. I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
That concludes the speakers. Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There is one addition to this evening's agenda, a motion to nominate and appoint Sherry M. Beverly to the Suffolk Clean Community Commission.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilman Rector.
Sir, moved.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Rector, Councilman Fawcett.
Second his motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero as Councilmember Williams is out of the chamber.
Okay. Is there any new business that required action of city council that a member would like to bring forward? Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, Mayor, I would. I'd like to make a motion that I move that the city manager be permitted to declare July the 5th, 2024, as a holiday for the city employees, and the city manager shall designate which city facilities will be closed.
Got a motion on the floor from Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Ward?
A second.
Got a second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepared. Oh, I'm sorry. Council, Councilman Rector.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It's very kind of you to let me speak. And I was just going to ask.
Okay, that's enough.
Thank you. Good night. No, I was just going to ask Deputy City Manager if, since this is sort of a impromptu kind of thing, if, if he would just kind of briefly go over what impact it might have on city services and whatnot, just so that people can feel, we can all feel good about what we're doing. I know sometimes when a Friday follows a Thursday holiday, it's, it's hard to, I know that the community is probably not going to necessarily be engaged in seeking out city services. So I think it's a good thing, and I support it. But I just, I think a little explanation would help.
Sure. Mayor, Vice Member, Council. So the, the brief conversation we had maybe leading up to this, we had the ability to look at some of the services and programs that we want to make sure we have in place on Friday if this moves forward. And so refuse will pick up as scheduled. And as we have announced on Friday, we'll maintain our summer camp programs on Friday. We'll keep the Cypress Pool open as well. And then obviously, you know, like any other holiday, public safety and things of that nature will, will be operation. The courts are closed. They made their separate announcement, but also working through the state program as well. We will also make sure to put out a, a public address if this moves forward.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, sir. This is caught off surprise, I guess. I did get a call about it last night. But my concern is, we just had a email that was sent out and also publicized that the city would be open on the 5th. And the service was also listed to the public what the city would be doing during the holidays and after holidays. So to me, when you put it out to the public that the operation would go on, on certain days, I think that's what you're supposed to do, not go back and change something on a spiritual moment without having some other, in my time on council, I've never seen where we came up and changed the date like that before. I have some concern with it.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I've got a question from our Deputy City Manager. If you could, once again, go over what will be available on Friday. And also, I believe that, and it is kind of unusual to Councilman Bennett's point, normally, we follow whatever this date does, is what we do. So I think this may be unique as to where the Fourth of July does fall on a Thursday. And not that we have to do every, not that we have to do something just because everybody else does it, but every other Hampton Road City, oh, seven, whatever it is, every other Hampton Road City is taking off on Friday as far as staff concerned. But I would like you to reiterate again what will be open Friday, so we're not shut down on a lot of these things that, you know, like the pool and, and some of the other amenities that our citizens will still have access to.
So right now, what we want to make sure that we have in place on Friday would include regularly scheduled refuse pickup, the pool, as well as summer camp programming. And we'll, we'll continue to run through any other programs. And we would make sure we communicate that with the public if there's anything that I'm missing at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor for approval and a second. So with that being said, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to two with Councilmembers Bennett and Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay. Do we have any other new business that a council member would like to bring forward for consideration? Councilman Rector?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion regarding village center zoning. And what I'd like to propose is I move that the planning commission be directed to recommend amendments to the Article Six of the UDO that provide density and dimensional standards for residential development in the Village Center Zoning District.
Okay. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
I'll second that, although I was a little surprised, but I'm glad. And I'm, I'll second it and support it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record.
Hold on, a clarification. What do you say?
Okay, oh, verification. Okay. Could you read your motion again?
Sure. We're directing.
We're directing that the Planning Commission be directed to recommend amendments to Article Six of the UDO that provide density and dimensional standards for residential development in the Village Center Zoning District. And it's my understanding that this stems from problems with infill development inside the village centers. There's not standards that cover some of these issues. So we're directing the planning department to go back and take a look. And they're going to have to take it to their committee on ordinances first. I'm assuming, and it'll rise through the planning commission. So, I mean, it'll probably be a good three months before we actually see anything. No, 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 no. I mean, somebody's shaking their head over there.
Councilmember Butler Barlow could shed some more light on it.
Yeah. So I made a motion back in February, yeah, that we get a review of the Village Center zoning ordinance. And, and the conditions of that motion were that we would get a review in June, and it was inadvertently left off of our June council schedule. But staff has prepared some recommendations, some things that staff can do within the existing ordinance through staff with our approval, and then some other long-term potential changes that they want to present to us. And I think the idea was that we would get a staff report at our July 17 meeting and make a recommendation to staff on what next steps we think they should take. And again, this is to address the infill development in the Village Center zoning, which is in odd places throughout the city, but it's allowing what I would call inappropriate development within our village, in particular Oakland and Hobson and Sandy Bottom. And this is designed to not restrict development, but to make it more compatible with the existing structures in those communities, and to lessen the impact of the new construction on the neighboring properties. And again, we'll get a staff report. It's my understanding we'll get a staff report based on this motion tonight at our July 17 meeting. And then we will be able to have a discussion and make recommendations to the planning department from that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we got a motion on the, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Ward, you also.
What community, what community you consider the village?
Say again?
What community you consider the village?
The villages would be like Hobson, Oakland, Wayville, Holland, Driver.
So this would cover anybody that's listed in the UDO as VC, which is Village Center. So it's not necessarily, these, these expand outside of what we traditionally see as, say, downtown Chautauqua. It expands out farther than that. So it's the VC Village Center Zoning District, not a particular village.
Right. So this, this is strictly possible UDO amendments to the VC zoning. If, there will still be, once the comprehensive plan is complete, we will There will still be, once the comprehensive plan is complete, we will be looking at specific village plans, because each village is somewhat different and unique. Some have historical designations, some don't, so that's something we're still gonna do, but this is just a way to address the zoning part of it, primarily setbacks, VC zoning has no setbacks at all, which makes it difficult. Another thing we could look at is impervious area, certain percentages limitations as far as impervious area is concerned, which would allow for more absorption. Another thing they might want to look at is gutters, but I mean, planning is, this is something they've been thinking about. So Councilmember Butler-Barlow brought it up, and Councilman Rector is just kind of, I guess we're moving the process a little quick, but, you know, we'll get it to the Planning Commission quicker, and then we'll still have our presentation, I wouldn't wear a presentation in July, but if we're having one, that's great. Then we can do that, and also, that information will be relayed to the Planning Department, but we will still have the individual village initiatives or plans once the comprehensive plan is done. Go ahead.
Sorry, but this is near and dear to my heart. So one comment, if you go on the city website and go under the zoning, you can pull up just VC zoning and see specifically where it is throughout the city. It's primarily Chukatack, Oakland, Hobson, Sandy Bottom, I think there's a little bit in Whaleyville. But it's, so the request is to review that because it doesn't seem to be having the desired effects from when it was put in place 20 years ago. So you can get on and look at specifically where the Village Center zoning is located. And there, I think, I think everyone will get a one-on-one update from the city manager. I already have had one, but I, my understanding was that everybody with your meetings would get an overview of what planning is proposing, and there's two phases to this. There is a, there are some dimensional table standards that staff can change based on our, you know, what we direct them to do, and to the mayor's point, setbacks, heights, and impervious surface ratios, and then the second phase of this, if we decide to move forward with it, would be through the comprehensive plan and updating the village plans that we've been talking about through the comprehensive plan process, that, you know, we clearly need to relook at all of our villages and some of the standards that we've set for those areas. So that's kind of the two-pronged. And if anybody has any other questions, call me. I'm up to here in this, so, but thank y'all, and I, like I said, this is just, this is just to move the process forward. This was supposed to come back to us in June, and it got, just kind of got laid aside, and so we're kind of getting back on track with the process, so plenty of more time to discuss. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Do we have any other new business that a council member would like to bring forward for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, Mr. Danny Epperson from Media and Community Relations does have some announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and Mr. Deputy City Manager. Good evening, and just to echo your comments, Deputy City Manager, we will, our office will put out that information again about the closing on Friday specifically for that tonight and tomorrow on social and online for the residents of Suffolk, and make sure it gets out there for you. But I'd like to start with some exciting news, promotions and announcements. Suffolk City Manager Al Moore has appointed James Danny Bowie, the city's new Chief of Police, effective this coming Monday, July 8th. Chief Bowie, who has served as interim police chief since October 2023, has, brings his 27 years of hard work and dedication to the Suffolk Police Department. Congratulations again, Chief Bowie. And also, in the City of Suffolk's Fire and Rescue Department, Fire Chief Mike Baraki announces the promotion of David Harrell as the Deputy Fire Chief, effective this coming Sunday, July 7th. Deputy Chief Harrell's career in fire service began in 1995, and he has been an integral part of Suffolk Fire and Rescue since completing the Southside Regional Fire Academy in 1996. Congratulations, Deputy Chief Harrell. In our city's Economic Development Department, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes announced Deanna Trimier's promotion to Assistant Director. Trimier has been with the City of Suffolk since 2000 and has served the Economic Development Department in several different capacities. Congratulations to you, Mr. Trimier. Promotions mark progress, and fresh faces bring new energy, as the City of Suffolk Police Department held a badge-pinning ceremony back on June 11th, and the city welcomed eight new police officers who will play a vital, crucial role in the job of keeping our city safe. Virginia U.S. Senator Mark Warner visited the city's Public Works Department on June 25th, and with him he brought a very big check. That check, in the amount of $3,040,000, was on behalf of our congressional leadership for this initial phase of the Kings Highway Bridge Design Project. The federal funding is to help cover 30% of the design costs associated with replacing the bridge, and for more information on the Kings Highway Bridge project, you can watch the entire presentation on our city's YouTube channel, as long as get a little history lesson about the bridge as well. In our Parks and Recs Department, as you heard earlier this evening, some of our events are in full swing. The Stars and Stripes Spectacular at Constance Wharf Park in Marina is set for Thursday, July 4th. The celebration for everyone kicks off with music from the Feenies at 6:00 p.m., followed by fireworks at 9:00, so remember to bring your own lawn chair and blanket. Admission is free. Food trucks will be on hand, and adult beverages for all over 21 with ID. So please note, though, that parking will not be available on-site at the event, and we ask that you use the shuttle stops that we will provide at the First Baptist Church Lot up the street at 237 North Main, and then behind the Godwin Courthouse at 150 North Main. Shuttles will run 5:15 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and then they'll run again right after the fireworks display. Some important notes on some other upcoming events, the City Suffolk TGIF Concert Series will not take place on July 5th, but it will resume on July 12th at Constance Wharf Park with the original rondelles. And starting July 26th, the series will then move to Bennett's Creek Park with that concert featuring the DeLoreans. Also coming up this month, as the city's 50th anniversary celebration continues, the city will hold its grand opening of the Downtown Festival Park on Saturday, July 13th at 5:00 p.m. Join us for a night of nostalgia and entertainment featuring food trucks and family-friendly fun. The locals' 70's covers band, the cover band Inside Out will perform, and there's a 70's themed costume contest with prizes, and after the concert, a very special screening of the 1978 film classic Like No Other, Superman: The Movie, starring Christopher Reeve as Super Size. Indeed, it's gonna be on our city's 40-foot movie screens. For more information on that, you can visit SuffolkParksAndRec.com. On to see what's new in our city, the city's Economic Development Department announced the grand opening of three businesses. Vital Care of Suffolk has been at the forefront of expanding access to state-of-the-art infusion therapy. Vital Care offers its patients quality care in the comfort of their homes through its dedicated and its trained staff. Low-key Restaurant and Bar has opened in downtown Suffolk. This business offers up food and drink and is located right near the upcoming Downtown Festival Park. And Burlington is now open in Suffolk. It is open in the Harborview area, and this national discount retailer offers low prices on name-brand merchandise for the entire family, so welcome Burlington to Suffolk. Now, back here at City Hall, we had some very special congratulations the other day. The city recently honored 23 of its longstanding employees. This milestone luncheon event celebrated a combined, I know you all love this number, 565 years of service to the City of Suffolk, so that's a combined total there. Again, congratulations and thank you to all of those with their, for their service and their ongoing service. It's the city's largest community-wide event, and it takes a lot of time to prepare for. So on June 24th, Suffolk's National Night Out 2024 Committee kicked off here at the City of Suffolk, right here in City Hall. We invited the community and civic group leaders to register for this year's August 6th event, and it will, and they came to pick up their neighborhood materials, and I'm telling you, it's gonna be another great year. There was a lot of energy in this room that night, and so much so, we just had to show you just a little smidgen here of that event.
We're gonna be number one. Have a good time, keeping the community safe.
My favorite event of the year.
Suffolk supports Suffolk.
Make this the best Suffolk National Night Out.
The more the merrier.
We can take number one.
Can you tell I'm competitive?
We're hoping that this is the biggest and best one we've had so far.
We're looking forward to seeing you all. There's gonna be some sweating, there's gonna be some laughing, and it's gonna be a good time. We'll see you in August.
Yeah, August indeed, so again, you can see and hear that excitement and anticipation of taking first place this year. We hope to get that first place this year. Be sure to check out your local community leaders and ask them to take part, and again, that's Tuesday, August 6th. Visit Suffolk-NNO.com for more details. Some great news to share from today's work session that we heard earlier today. In partnership with Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, the Suffolk Public Library, and the Suffolk Early Childhood Development Commission are providing age-appropriate books for each month to register children from birth to their fifth birthday. For these details, visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com/DPIL, or of course, you can stop by any of our Suffolk Public School Library locations. Some important roadway reminders now, the City of Suffolk has started its 30-day warning period for red light enforcement cameras located at North Main and Constance Road. During this warning period, drivers caught violating red light rules will be issued a cautionary letter delivered by mail to their residents. Then, beginning on July 21st, offenders will incur a $50 fine per violation. And finally, tonight, the City of Suffolk Public Safety Committee would like to remind all citizens of the Public Safety Portal. This online platform empowers our citizens to share their suggestions on community safety improvements and public safety matters. Users of the portal will also have the option to submit anonymously. We do want to remind our residents, however, that the portal is not intended for reporting criminal activity, but in the event of any emergency, please dial 911, of course. For more information on the Public Safety Committee and the portal, you can visit our website, SuffolkVA.us. And of course, remember, there are a number of ways that you can stay connected to us here in the City of Suffolk and all Suffolk happenings from our social media, our YouTube channel, where you can watch tonight's city council meeting, and any of our past meetings as well, and of course, subscribe to our newsletter. Thank you all for your attention, and have a wonderful evening and Independence Day holiday.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Epperson. We'll now move to announcements from council. Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to say that I attended the bill signing ceremony that was held at the Western Tidewater Community Services Board, where Governor Yonkin signed the bills supporting his Right Help Right Now initiative that will, among other things, give family members the right to visit with their family when they have been detained for some mental health issues. And then also, the Suffolk Art League held an opening for the Suffolk Art League's Open Members Show. This show features works submitted primarily by members of the Suffolk Art League. The show runs through the 19th of this month, and there's an amazing variety of works that are on display at the Suffolk Art Museum, and many of the works are available for purchase. I would encourage anyone who has an interest in original works of art to check out the show, and if you're not already a member of the Suffolk Art League, I would also consider you, would encourage you to consider joining. And then I had the privilege of attending the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce Small Business of the Year Awards Ceremony that was held at the Delta Marriott in Chesapeake. My congratulations go out to Chris Allen and Melody Brown from the Penner House Bed and Breakfast and the Cafe Davina Coffee and Crepe Shop, as they were honored by the Chamber as Suffolk's Small Business of the Year. So once again, congratulations to them, it's very well deserved. It's a unique place, and once again, if you've not been there, I would encourage you to stop by and get a cup of coffee and a crepe and let them give you a little tour of the facility. It's amazing what they've done, done with that house. And then last Saturday on the 22nd, I attended the Zoe Life Ministries STEAM Workshop that was held at the Sixth Street Recreation Center. Congratulations to Reverend Simmons and Reverend Hannah for putting on an excellent financial education exercise for the children. They set up a Citizenville where children were given some money, and they had to work their way through the village, paying rent and buying groceries, among other things, and as the mayor has pointed out to us many times, you know, the folks that do the worst job of managing their money and planning their finances often pay the highest prices for the things that they have to borrow money to get, and it's a lifetime, almost a lifetime financial penalty. So I appreciate very much what the Zoe Life Ministries did to help these children, educate them about the fact that, you know, basically, you're only given so much money and you have to spend it responsibly to get all the things that you need to survive in this life. I looked up the Zoe Life Ministries, and their, as part of their mission statement, it's a quote from the fourth chapter of Hosea, which says, "My people are destroyed by a lack of knowledge." And so they're doing their best to eliminate that lack of knowledge. And then I would like to offer my congratulations to all the promotions that we've had recently within the city, and chief among those, Chief Bowie, congratulations to you, and then also for the new police officers that were recently sworn in. Also, congratulations to the new Deputy Fire Chief Harrell and Deanna Trimier for being promoted to Assistant Director of Economic Development, and for her past performances, any indicator, that position is in very, very good hands. And then lastly, that longevity luncheon that was referred to, I think that's a real testament to Al Moore and the city staff, and particularly in the manager's office, that we have that many people that are willing to basically devote their lives to the service of the citizens of Suffolk. It just goes to show that Suffolk is a great place to be, it's a great place to work, and it's a great place to raise your family. And then lastly, with the 4th of July coming up, please be careful, I'm sure that the Fire and Rescue are gonna have enough things to do that evening without responding to a bunch of fireworks-related accidents. Personally, I'd like my house to still be standing on July the 5th and not be burned down by an errant bottle rocket or roman candle that somehow or another finds their way into our neighborhood. But anyway, with that, I hope everybody enjoys the 4th of July. Remember what that day is all about. It doesn't hurt to go back and read the Declaration of Independence and recognize the fact that the people that put that thing together and started this great country that we live in basically put everything that they had on the line to get this going, and if it had not been successful, probably every one of them would have been hung. So keep that in mind, and just remember that, you know, as the old saying goes, freedom is not free, and it's something that we have to treasure, protect, and sometimes unfortunately fight for to keep. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Chief Bowie. Well deserved, glad that you're in that position. I know you're gonna do well, you've already started off doing such a great job. To all the people, employees, and who has been elevated, congratulations to everyone. Deanna, glad to know and hear that she's now the Assistant Director. Also, on Saturday, June 22nd, I attended the Zoe Life Ministry Second STEAM Program Event at East Suffolk Recreation Center. Like Councilman Rector said, the program was geared towards teaching kids life skills. And I too would like to thank Reverend Simmons and Reverend Hannah and others for putting on, putting together such a great event for our youth. On Saturday, June 22nd, I, along with Vice Mayor Ward, attended the Juneteenth Freedom Day Celebration at Pewsville Park in Pewsville. They had lots of food, fun, drinks, and entertainment. It was a great event. On Saturday, June 29th... On Saturday, June 29th, again, along with Vice Mayor Ward, I had the pleasure of attending the Los Amigos Incorporated 63rd Dora R. Mason Luncheon, where Dr. Britt and I received the 2024 Community Service Award. You know, what's interesting is, the last time that the Suffolk chapter hosted this event was 31 years ago. And they, like I said, they've been around 63 years. And for an organization to be around that long, that says a lot, that speaks volume. I want to thank the ladies of that organization for putting on such an awesome event. And we are truly blessed to have such a great group of ladies providing missions of service in our city and throughout the United States. Because they are, they are all over the United States, this organization. So thank you. Thank you for what you do in our community. With that, I'll go to my word of the month for July 2024, and it's Los Amigos, which means "the friend" in Spanish. I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July, and be safe and enjoy. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, again, you won't get enough of this, but congratulations, Chief Bowie, for that promotion. You've been here 20 some odd years. Professionalism, you've earned your way up. It's your time to shine now. So give us your best shot, okay? Keep things going. Appreciate it. Also for Dave Harrell, the new district chief over at Fire Rescue. I've been knowing Dave Harrell for quite a number of years. Did a lot of interacting when I was with fire to interact with Suffolk. And Dave is top-notch. This man is well-positioned to be in that position. And I think that I want to congratulate him, and I want to say that, a shout-out to the fire chief that recognized the professionalism this man had to bring him up and to help fill that slot. So I think that's going to, that's going to be pretty good. More to come on that. EDA Deana, I've known Deana since I've been on council, and she's always been at the forefront, working hard in different ways. So congratulations to her on the opportunity to move up into that deputy position. Last day of the month, we retired EC Harris, the sheriff of the City of Suffolk. EC had 40-plus years of police experience between his start of his career and where he ended up in the Sheriff's Department. He is one of the finest, finest gentlemen that I know. He is first-class. He was a professional all the way around. He enjoyed doing things and interacting with people, communities. I can't even name the countless things that that man did for the City of Suffolk and the citizens of the city. I hate to really see him go. I mean, I've been friends with him for a number of years. I know when I went through hard times, the one thing that struck me the most about him is empathy and compassion for somebody. And when I had the opportunity to end up over at oversea for six days, every morning at 8:30, he'd be sitting at the couch with a paper, willing to talk to me. I was going through a tough time, and he was right there to support me through it. So that was, that was pretty good. I hate to really see him go, but I want to congratulate him on his retirement. To take it a little further, David Miles has taken his place. He was his chief deputy, and David Miles is also a first-class individual that is going to push that department along and continue to do the great things they do. I know David and his staff over there are going to do a great job. I think EC left them in good hands. So again, congratulations to David Miles for stepping into the, to the job, and we'll look to see where things go with him. I had an opportunity to go to Burlington with the, with the mayor, and I think Mr. Bennett was there. And I want to thank Burlington for coming from Chesapeake Square. We got them over to Suffolk, and they went over there next to where Office Max vacated a place over there in Harborview. They kind of filled the gap, and they did a nice job putting that building together, and it's a good presentation. Thanks to the eight new officers that decided to come to Suffolk and make Suffolk part of their career. That's good, Chief. Keep, keep cranking them out. Keep bringing them. We get those numbers up, and see if we can shorten that gap a little bit. But I happened to bump into one a couple of days ago. He was coming out of Walgreens up on the north end, and we had a little chat. And he's as excited as he could be to be a part of it. Just about ready to get cut loose somewhere in there. So we'll have more out there to work with. Senator Warner was here, and I'm going to tell you to, you know, all politics aside, when you can have somebody come to your city and drop a little, almost three and a half million dollars on you to help you along. I think the mayor mentioned it earlier tonight, that some of this money we get is people out there digging to get it. The staff is out there digging to get these grants and get these available funds that are through these different programs. And without these, and it goes to all the staff here, everybody, that works on this stuff to get these grants, to get this money is phenomenal, because that's less money we take and have to take in out of the taxpayers' back pocket and out of the budget. So we want to keep that kind of stuff coming until the well dries up, and hopefully, it keeps on going. As far as, I want to thank the 23 employees, the milestone they have. I mean, I think we forget about how long people work, and to give them a little bit of recognition for their job well done, I think was pretty great. That little luncheon goes a long ways. The Fourth of July coming up. This is the time people just do things sometimes that are crazy. They just do things that are crazy. Enjoy, let the professionals blow things up, let the fireworks be displayed. But you'll always find that somehow they get into the area and they start doing things, and they can create some real serious injuries. I mean, I've seen fingers, hands, everything burns and everything I can imagine happen because people use fireworks, and they don't know what they're doing. I would ask that they don't do that. But most of all, be safe, but also drive safe. Do not get out here and drink and drive. Get you a designated driver or hire you a driver. But please do not do drinking and driving during the holiday. It's not going to, it's not going to do you well. And I think I'm going to call it a night there, because I know you'll pick up where I left off on some things that I might have missed that we went to. But anyway, I know everybody wants to go home and do the vacation, so.
Bennett. Councilmember Butler-Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll save a minute and just say, I agree with everything that's been said. And congratulations to everybody that have been congratulated. The first thing I wanted to say is whether you're worried about your lawn or your garden or your whole farm, we are very thankful for the rain, the recent rain, and some relief from the heat, and some hope for a better harvest. So my, my, just know that the whole agriculture community is thankful for the rain that we've received over the past few days. We had a lot of really great reports tonight. There's a lot of really great things going in the city. And it's wonderful to hear the news of the progress that we're making and all the positive things that are going on. I also want to encourage everybody to have a fun Fourth of July, enjoy some sort of celebration. There's a big one up in Critten and Eclipse with the parade and the fireworks and the raft race, which I've actually been in the raft race before, and I didn't drown, and I won't do it again. But it's a fun time up there if you don't want to try to make your way downtown, although that's a great celebration too. So I hope everybody enjoys their Fourth and remembers the significance of the day. I'm going to try now to say a few things. On June 24th, the City of Suffolk lost one of its finest citizens. Jay Samuel Glasscock left us last Monday. And he was truly a giant among men and one of the most treasured citizens of the City of Suffolk. And in true Sam fashion, he planned most of his own memorial service and gave us all our instructions on what we were to do and not do, up to and including a thank you note that he had read at the end of the service. And I'm going to read you one little piece of it, but I will tell you that the family is intending to ask the Suffolk News-Herald to publish that document, and it's worth a read. As I said, Sam, being Sam, continues to teach us even though he has left us physically. So I'm going to read just the end. Again, this is the words of Sam Glasscock on the occasion of his departing our company. He says, "Our country is great, truly great, but democracy is fragile. Part of our social contract is that we are to be intelligently informed, exercise sound, critical thinking, and care about the whole country. Democracy requires us to emphasize our obligations rather than being too quick to demand our rights. Fear, hate, and greed can get us into a peck of trouble. Humility and courage are good friends on life's journey. Beware of those who spread fear, sow misinformation, disregard the rules that make democracy work, and promise a return to an imagined past that never was. Honestly examine our own faults. Above all, listen. Listen to what other folks say and try to respond to their legitimate concerns. You can't solve all the world's problems, but you can affect your corner of planet Earth. Love your spouse, hug your kids, enjoy life with your neighbors, and show them all that you care about them." And he closes and says, "Many thanks for your caring and for our time together." Sam Glasscock, class of 2024. Thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
That was something. I would just like to start out by saying, after she closed on that note, I've known Mr. Glasscock for, I know, better than 30 years when he was in the State Senate, House of Delegates. And I, he supported the city and has always been a big supporter of the city. And he's been a great person to all of us, and he definitely will be missed. Matter of fact, I saw him down at Councilman Ballow's house here, about how many weeks ago?
In April.
In April. And he was up, walking around, having fun and everything. So, I mean, he was just a jolly man right up to the end. So I send my condolences out to that family. And his daughter, you know, Linda Bunch, she works over there in the Arts Center. And she's a dear friend of mine too, and I want to send my condolences out to the family and just keep them in our, in our pray, in my prayers. Also, I'd like to say to Erica, our clerk, Erica Dollar, she lost her mother-in-law, and Ms. Caroline Dollar, and I would like to send my condolences to you and your family as well. And we will be keeping you well in prayer. I want to say that Ms. Lawrence came up, and I knew James Lawrence for years. I remember when he got killed in the accident on Portsmouth Boulevard and Suburban Drive. And he was a star, hard-working, dedicated person to this city. He and Moses Riddick, they worked hand and glove just about. And they did a lot for the citizens of Suffolk. They started Parker Riddick Neighborhood over there where the public housing is at. So his name, to me, still reigns and means a lot to me in the City of Suffolk. And I'm hoping with her request that we will look at some way to try and recognize the name of James Lawrence in some may, way or means here in the city. So I would like to ask the City Managing Council, let's take a look at it and see if there's a street or building or something that, some recognition that we can do that to, in recognition to Mr. James Lawrence. I really would appreciate that. Also, I want to say that this past Sunday, I had a visit at Kangrove Pentecost Holands Church. The 141 years, 121 years of service at the church, church being dedicated. 23 years of past, 53 years, I'm sorry, 53 years of Pastor Kendrick being pastor of that church for 53 years. I mean, that is amazing. And guess who they had speaking for that Sunday service for the anniversary? None other than our own elder fellow, Z. And he brought the word. And he came from Romans 2nd chapter, 21st through to 29th verse. You might want to take a chance to read it sometime in your spare time. But he delivered the word to me and everyone that was in attendance. And I will not go into his message, because I don't like to preach behind someone else after they have given the message. But he gave us all something to think about, live by, and serve others by, and serve God. So I want to congratulate you, Mr. Z. Job well done, and I will be back the next time, maybe when you say you're going to be preaching again. But y'all maybe want to take a trip out there in the country and see what's going on. But I did, Reverend Kendrick, he and I served on the Housing Authority together, and I've known that family for many, many years as well. And he's a well-deserving bishop out there at the church, and I really thoroughly enjoyed myself. And with that, let's see, I have about 10 more minutes, don't I?
Roger took your time.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, I want to give a shout-out too. I went down, Councilman Ballow and I were there. I don't know, somebody else might have been there too. But down at Hobson at the Juneteenth with Mary Hill. I mean, they put it on. They had, they had a real good time. They had good speakers and all. And I think she did a great job putting that together for Juneteenth there. And also, the NAACP had Juneteenth, well, there at God is Real Church. So anyway, we have had a good time on the Fourth of July this year, and I hope everyone that's traveling be safe and hope you have a good holiday. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
And I'm going to be a little brief, but when somebody like Sam Glasscock passes, it just shows us what a remarkable city we live in. It's not just Sam, it's all the remarkable people. James Wesley Lawrence, think about all the remarkable people. We had another one pass away funeral this weekend, was Ellen Godwin. Ellen was married to Jimmy Godwin. He was a local judge here in town forever. She's part of my life when we were growing up. She's moved on. And the list goes on and on. But that's what's so remarkable about our city. We all have different people that have been a part of it, and all of them have been extremely special to us. Chief Bowie, you know, I've already talked to you. I'm going to spend two minutes on talking about something that none of you want to hear about probably, but it was my 50th class reunion, the class of Forest Glen High School out in Holy Knuck Borough. 150 young people came together in the eighth grade, and we went through school together, and we learned to love each other. And we decided we would have a five-year reunion every year, and we did. We just experienced our 50th reunion, had a committee to do it, and it was remarkable. Go online and look at the picture. We've got some of the most diverse people in the City of Suffolk, but we all love each other, and we've just had a wonderful, amazing life together. We had it at the Cultural Arts Center. Didn't think we could afford it, but when Center. Didn't think we could afford it, but when calling the Cultural Arts Center, they've changed the rules so that you can rent the place relatively cheap for a class reunion. People went to this place, to the Cultural Arts Center, had never been there before. So I want to thank them. It was a remarkable experience. We had a great, great time. Teresa Earls in tourism was a part of our, our situation. She helped us. Jennifer helped us. Erica helped us. We went to the school system. They let us take a tour of Forest Glen High School, what used to be Forest Glen High School, Forest Glen Middle School now. Preacher Ray Bagley from our class gave us a sermon and made us all feel good about the world again. Class reunions are pretty important in a community like Suffolk. So, and it brings everyone together and it meant a great deal to me and I think for everyone in that class, they, we were really proud of each other. And with that, everybody's been thanked, everybody's been recognized. I'm gonna say good night. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yeah, so like, yeah, I've been to so many places and everybody have mentioned about it, but I did go to Mr. Williams, Councilman Williams, to receive an award for his community work, what he does in the City of Suffolk. And I really enjoyed myself. The first time I really heard about this group and I was very impressed with the group. And also Dr. Britt was there. So it was a rewarding event just to see people that you know from the City of Suffolk getting awards for what they do in their life to try to help people. So I really had a thing, I thank them for inviting me, I really do. And I thank you, thanks again. This is, like I said, it's good to see that. And about Zoe Ministry, I've been dealing with Pastor Simmons for a while and he always trying to do, reach back to the community, him and Minister Hannah. So I did attend that. So, and please Chief Bowie, I already congratulate you. We all know that you respect, you do a good job. Councilman Bennett, I have to challenge you on that because I think Pewsville puts on a good job. I mean, I, I'm proud of Pewsville. This is the second time I've seen it. Now, every time I just look and say, thanks for being in my borough. So it's not a competition, but I just want to make sure I feel they, they number one, but that's all right. And I just want to thank Robert Lewis for that Pewsville job we doing there. Finally, it's happening. And with time, we will, they will see what we was doing is worth their weight. And I think we'll do, they'll be happy with that. And I want to thank Mark Follow, he's gone, but thank him for coming to Magnolia Park. It was a crisis, it was something going on and one of the communities that got on, we're talking about it and they respond pretty well. And I think he gonna take care of that. I like to see that because this was the first time I really walked around Magnolia Park. And that's a nice park. It's really nice. And I, and I even told one of the civic league people, wow, I mean, I gotta spend more time here. Go to barbecue and events, you don't, you just stay in one or two places, but it's, it's a good park. And I think the people in that community will enjoy that. Like I said, first of all, I want to thank God and thank the Nazm Borough allowing me to serve them four more years. And one of the things I, if you've seen my newspaper, and that's before this happened, I said, I'm not done yet. So thank you so much and God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up, try to get out of here by quarter to 10 anyhow. It has been a month, has been a month since we've had a meeting and that's, there's been a lot that's gone on in the month. But most of it's been said, so I'll just skip over. But I do want to start with also offering my condolences to City Clerk Erica Dolly and her family on the passing of her mother-in-law Caroline. We missed you last week. I think Tracy missed you, but anyhow, glad you're back, made it back in one piece. A lot's been said about Sam Glasscock. I mean, I've got to say something about a fellow Chuckatuckian, Chuckatuckian, I guess we would, we would be. And I too had just seen Sam out at Councilmember Butler Ballow's house a couple of months ago. And I regret that I was not, I totally planned on going to his funeral Saturday, regret that I couldn't make it. And I was kicking myself all day. And my wife said, what's your problem? And I said, well, I really wanted to get out to Mr. Glasscock's funeral and it bothers me that I didn't get there. But obviously, I mean, he was a very dedicated public servant. He not only served our city, he served the state and he served our country as well, all with honor and distinction. I never heard him say a disparaging word about anybody or anything really. He graduated from Chuckatac High School, Hampton, Sydney, UVA Law School, served in the JAG Corps, the US Army, practiced law with, who became Governor Mills Godwin, practiced law with him, was on the board for 25 years on the Louise OBCE Hospital Board of Directors. Matter of fact, I think he was still on the board when we did, when they did the transfer from OBCE to Centerra and the land. And he was, he was a integral part of that. I think right, it's about the time he was getting ready to retire. And he served on many other numerous boards and commissions. He was selected as Suffolk First Citizen in 1994. And as Councilman Bennett stated, he was in the General Assembly and served in the Virginia House of Delegates from 69 to 91. Mr. Glasscock obviously lived an honorable life of service and he will be missed who all had the good fortune to know him. And it has been a month since our last meeting. I'm gonna go and blow through this stuff real quick. We had a lot going on in Suffolk. Anybody thinks we didn't. And I hope everybody goes back and looks at our work session to take a look at these CIP projects. I thought we were, I thought the whole thing was impressive last year. This year is just off the chain. And the good part about from now and the next 18 months or so, we're gonna see a lot of these projects, large projects, come to fruition. And the money is spent in almost all areas of our city and all sectors, from parks and rec, you know, to roads, to buildings. I mean, I think we've got it all covered and done exceptionally well with it. The Dismaswamp had their annual meeting at Center for Cultural Arts on the 7th. I went by there. It's always good to kind of hear what they got going on. The police badge pending on the 11th, what they do officers is always welcome. Followed up the next day, Suffolk, Keep Suffolk Beautiful Volunteer Appreciation Event that was also held at the Center for Cultural Arts and was, it was pretty well attended. I think we had about five council members there, maybe even six. And then the next day, we had Governor Yonkin at the Western Tidewater Community Services Board Office in Northern, in Northern Suffolk with an official signing of some multiple bills related to addressing mental health issues. On the 19th, I too was in Hobson on Juneteenth, the event hosted by Mary Hill is one thing. One thing about Mary's events, we always have oysters. So that's, that's pretty cool. Their, her oysters and I guess they just plucked them out of the water there the day before. That's always good. Chamber Commerce Small Business of the Year Award, Councilman Rektor alluded to, congratulations to the Pinnerhouse. I was hoping they'd win the whole thing. I mean, I looked at the competition and I thought they could take the whole thing home. I think if they'd taken those that judged it out there, they probably would have, other than seeing the video. I mean, the video is good, but it really doesn't do the place justice. And for you folks that have not been there, I mean, it's, it's kind of a gem just hidden back there in a corner. I mean, you just blow by it, don't even think about it, but you've got to get out. And the really cool thing is that huge magnolia in the front. Actually, you could go around the back of it and there's like an archway there and there's tables literally underneath that magnolia. There's about four tables under there. So that's pretty cool too. The 25th, as was mentioned, we hosted Senator Mark Warner at the Public Works Center, picked up a check for $3 million to just kind of design the start, the design of the King's Highway Bridge. I mean, $3 million ain't chump change, but it's a long way to go to what we're gonna need. But like they say, you can't finish what you don't start. So I guess we just started. So we'll see where that takes us. And then we had a bonus announcement that we got to five, about $5,319,360 for construction of the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail. And that's covered in our work section as well, another $5 million. And then we got another $1 million that's going towards the water treatment plant that was arranged by Congresswoman Jen Kiggins. So we've got great support, I think, in, at this state and especially the federal level. I mean, I interact, well, not interact with them on a regular basis, but I mean, we kind of do either hear representatives, but I mean, Kane's okay, Warner's super, Kiggins is super. They, they've been to town. They listen and they've actually produced. And that's what it takes to make things happen. Because unfortunately, the city doesn't have the latitude to print money. We gotta kind of keep a balanced budget, not tax our citizens to death. So these other sources and the relationships you build to acquire those fundings is essential. And, and our deputy city manager and really the manager and the staff all together have worked on the state and federal level and they've been doing it for a while. So they know them, they trust them. We give them what they want so we can make their decision easy. And that's what it is. They have to justify their decisions. And we try to give them the information that they need to make it a no-brainer. This one dots the i's, crosses the t's and, you know, it's the way to go. A national night out kickoff was good. Hopefully it won't be 100. EC is retired. We used to always joke about how EC's the one that determines how hot it's gonna be on national night out. But hopefully, say a little prayer for us and it'll be under 90 maybe.
He'll call you this.
Yeah, he'll call. Burlington Ribbon Cutting over Northern Suffolk, this was a weird one. We, we went to this one too. The Ribbon Cutting for Mathnasium. Anybody heard of Mathnasium?
Hey, I didn't even Google that because I do like Brooklyn.
I wasn't exactly sure what, I thought it might have been something you need a nasal spray for or something. But, you know, it's actually a bath tutoring service. Not, you know, not just for kids that need help, but even on advanced levels in their franchise. So, you know, the parents can drop their kids off and I could have used one of those when I was in school. We had to take out one, two times. And we, we talk about working together all the time. I had the privilege to attend also the Las Amigas event, but I was there Thursday night. I think Councilman Williams and Councilman Vice Mayor Ward went Saturday to get you a award. But I was there Thursday night, myself and Mayor Alexander and a couple hundred people to do their welcome. And I was there representing the city and bringing greetings from the city. And our city was very, very well represented. Mr. Ross Boone was the emcee for that event. And as Councilman Williams mentioned, it's the first time in a long, long time, the Suffolk Chapter was the host. So like I told Mayor Alexander sitting in the thing, I told him, I said, this event may be in your, in your city, but I can tell you Suffolk's in the house. Because we had them covered all the way around. And that's a great group. They've got, they do community service projects, partnerships with schools, senior citizens organizations, homeless shelters, health advocacy groups, public safety and a bunch of other worthwhile causes. We also mentioned Zoe Ministry, which I didn't get a chance to go to that and understand my, my friend Reverend Simmons put that on. He's a great guy too. I've had a lot of really good discussions with him. And then on Saturday, I went to a luncheon at the Bishop Obadiah Colander Outreach and Faith Temple Church. And they too were hosting something very similar to it. They do a lot of work, financial advice, tutoring. They have what's called Nisi House, which is kind of like a Geneva Shelter type house right next to them, where they provide shelter for domestic abuse victims, food, clothing, and, you know, credit accounts on tutoring and a bunch more. And it's these are kind of organizations, I mean, this is what it takes to make things work. Just get people involved, get, get churches involved, get civic leagues involved, get individuals involved. And we are certainly doing that throughout the city. Of course, we got two law enforcement officers that got recognized tonight, retirement of, of my good friend EC Harris. The only thing I can say about EC is he absolutely brought civic engagement to a new level. I mean, I remember after he got elected sheriff the, the first time, I mean, he was still out there every day. And I said, EC, the election's over. You can turn it off now. Because, I mean, he was at everything, doing everything, you know? And he said, no, 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 that's what I do. And that is what he did. He had a passion to serve and he has indeed set the bar high for major miles. But I'm sure he'll fill in the shoes. He had a good teacher. And Chief Bowie, I can't say enough, I'm not gonna kill the rest of 30 minutes talking about what you've done since you've been in the City of Suffolk. But the bottom line is, you know, you've earned it through the respect that you've been able to garner, not only from the individual that made the decision to give you that job, but also the men and women that you command. And I see it at events, you've also earned the respect of your citizens. Because when I see you interacting with them, you're on the same level. You know, they consider you a citizen, just like themselves. So keep up the good work and congratulations. And that's it. So I'm gonna go to my quote of the night. My quote of the night has to do with civic engagement and what we're able to do when we have a bunch of folks working to do the same thing. And that is, and I'm not sure who this quote's from, but anyhow, I didn't write it. It's a quote, "We cannot live only for ourselves. A thousand fibers connect us with our fellow men. The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members. One of the marvelous things about community is that it enables us to welcome and help people in a way we couldn't as individuals." And with that, I will say good evening and ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett?
Motion to go.
Got a motion approval, Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second for Vice Mayor Ward. Any discussion of motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting is hereby adjourned.